Now, we're ready to get back to business. Well, welcome to Wednesday, August 14th, 2013 of the Whittier Regional Technical Technical High School meeting. That was a mouthful for tonight.
Sure it was.
Would you please join me in the privilege of saluting to our flag? I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing? Mr. DeRosa?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to call for a moment of silence. One of our graduates, Amanda Rodriguez, passed away on July 6, 2013. Amanda was born in Haverhill on February 13, 1995. She's a graduate of Whittier Tech where she studied cosmetology. She was also an active member of the school's key club. She was a licensed cosmetologist and had already been employed. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, a moment of silence. Thank you.
I'm sure Amanda will be missed in the Whittier family. I'd like to call to order our meeting tonight. Is there anyone out there that has anything to bring forward, any kind of a comment to address the school committee? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker.
I move the approval of the minutes of June 12, regular school committee meeting.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the school committees for June 12 and the second. Have we all taken a look at them, all read them, all in favor?
Aye.
We have one abstention.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker.
I move the approval of June 12, minutes of executive session.
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion to approve the June 12 and the second. You've all had an opportunity to read them, all in favor?
Aye.
One abstention, two abstentions. Thank you. Mr. Tucker, anything else?
I would move the treasurer's report, however, I just received it in tonight's packet. I'll allow someone else.
Well, we have a treasurer's report, everybody. Who is the treasurer?
The district, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, the district treasurer is Amy Pockset. She doesn't come to the meeting. She submits it. Our assistant treasurer is not here tonight. The report was sent to you a little bit late because we were working still on closeouts for the end of last year.
I'm looking for a motion to put these minutes off. I have a motion that I've asked and got, well, I need a second to hold off these minutes until the next meeting. Anybody, any comments on holding these minutes off till the next meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker, anything else?
No, we moved the minutes.
Wait a minute, did I do something?
We accepted the minutes.
You accepted the minutes, yeah.
We accepted the minutes. Did we accept the minutes?
And we accepted the-
You were on the treasurer's report.
The treasurer's report. Thanks for keeping us straight.
I move the-
I should have said "all in favor." I didn't do that. Thanks for keeping us straight. All right, we have all business. Reports and communications. Mr. DeRosa.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, members of the committee. For informational purposes, I submitted some personnel actions. We have hires, department head, biology instructor, Spanish instructor, special ed instructor, machine tech. We also hired teachers to update scopes and sequences, hired teachers to update scopes and sequences for the vocational technical, and we also hired mentors for the 2013-14 school year. We also established a committee to examine the new early warning indicator system. We hired people for ELL, update scopes and sequences. You have a list of our cluster chairs, the people that provided summer guidance services, our fall coaches, our co-op coordinator, work that was done on student health records, the summer painters, literacy facilitators and coaches, John Collins writing coaches, class advisors for the upcoming school year, and people that were hired over the summer to wash buses. In addition, you have a copy of the layoffs that were done at the end of last school year, non-renewal of an instructor, and then the rehire. And just to explain for clarification purposes, the paraprofessionals in Title I tutor are on grants, so it's an annual job. So as a precautionary measure, they're laid off in June and then rehired for the upcoming school year. And that's it, Mr. Chairman, for personnel actions.
Fantastic. How about a budget update?
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I do not have a budget update. In terms of an MCAS update, July 8 through August 1, we held a free MCAS summer program for English Language Arts, Math, and Biology for incoming ninth and 10th graders. 179th graders and 125 10th graders participated. MCAS results for Math, Biology were released to the superintendents on August 7, and they will be released to the public sometime in September. In terms of an update, Mr. Chairman, on Thursday, June 13, 2013, I attended the Haverhill City Council meeting. In attendance with me was our representative, Dick Early, and our new business manager, Kara Cosmos. I would like to extend a sincere thanks to the Haverhill City Council, not only for their financial support in approving our budget, but also for their expression of praise and pride for the work that Whittier Tech does. On Tuesday, July 2, I met with Mayor James Farantini from Haverhill. We discussed the possibility of an after-school program that would be funded by a competitive grant that Haverhill's applying for. It gave us the opportunity to discuss the program, the costs and the possibilities, and how would we, how we would be able to utilize that program. On Tuesday, July 16 through Friday, July 19, I attended the Mass Association of School Superintendent's Executive Institute. The focus of the institute was mostly on the new teacher evaluation and the recent influx of initiatives from DESE, and it appears that in this upcoming school year, the focus of the department will be on district-determined measures, which is part of the teacher evaluation process. On Thursday, July 25, August 1, and August 8, I attended Rotary at Haverhill Country Club. At the August 8 meeting, I was invited to be the guest speaker and provide a historical perspective of Whittier Tech, along with an update of our accomplishments. Today, I attended the MAVA planning retreat. The focus of the retreat was to talk about district-determined measures and also to talk about public relations. Tomorrow, State Treasurer Steve Grossman, who also was our graduation speaker last June, will be presenting, and the Commissioner of Education, Mitchell Chester, will be there as well. Also, Mr. Chairman, if I may, a couple of things I'd like to mention. If you remember, last year, we talked about a partnership program with Northern Essex Community College where adults could, through Northern Essex, with our instructors and instructors from night school, work in a CNC machine operator program. They had their first graduating class on July 30, 2013, which was great to see. So the program is working. We had eight graduates, and that program will be running again, and we're expecting 12 to 15 students this upcoming fall, the fall. Also, I'd like to mention, Harry Tarkesian brought forth a letter for me. Harry's been working, as you know, very aggressively with National Grid on ways to save energy, and through one of our initiatives, we were notified from National Grid that we would be eligible for a $4,000 rebate for the work that we had done over the summer. So I thank Carrie and appreciate that. Also, I received a letter forwarded to me from the school principal, and it was from the staff and the trustees at the library in Groveland. As I reported during the school year, our students were working on a storage shed for the library. And if I can, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read a couple of paragraphs. It says, "We absolutely love the shed. It's very well constructed and attractive, has electricity and a book drop slot. We use it to store donations, and it's a pleasure to let you know that Mr. Corr and his students worked hard during the last several months. The students were friendly, polite, and a testament to the positive impact of cooperative education program at Whittier Tech." So I wanted to bring that forward so the committee would be aware of those things.
Was that carpentry?
Yes. And that's it for my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa.
Just a quick question. You went to MAVA campus today and tomorrow?
Yes.
Anything mentioned about the Common Core at all?
Not really, no. The focus, everybody's hang-up has been district-determined measures. That's what everybody's mostly talking about. And Park, whether or not Park is going to be instituted.
Thank you.
Couple of things I think we still need to address on the agenda here is the-
Did you talk about the establishment of a scholarship?
Oh. We're going to go onto that right now.
I thought it was on to him.
Yeah, after my goals.
I was going to ask you about your goals and the scholarships. Those are the two things we remain in this here.
Right, and I submitted my goals to the committee, and I welcome any feedback if anybody has any question on the goals or-
I haven't read them yet, but I will.
Okay, I need a, I need a vote of the committee to accept the goals.
Vote to accept, a motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second to accept the superintendent's goals. We've all had a chance to view those over the month's absence. Dick, you haven't?
No, I can't say I did.
Okay. Do you think we need another? I get a motion and a, and a second on the field. I guess we had a little bit of a discussion. Are we all set on this? Any other comments? All in favor? Charlie?
Aye.
Aye what? You're voting?
I'm all set.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm in abstain.
All abstention. So we've accepted the superintendent's goals with one abstention.
No disrespect to the superintendent, I just didn't read them.
Probably one of the first, well, never mind. Good job, Dick.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I have a request. As you know, in school committee policy, any gift or scholarship that comes forward to Whittier Tech has to be accepted by the school committee. And I'd like to explain what we've done or what we're doing. We established a 40th anniversary committee last academic school year. As you know, we're approaching our 40th birthday this coming September, actually, September 10 of 1973, the building opened, students came a week later. As a fundraiser to establish the scholarship, we've done two things. We've done an ad book where we've worked with local businesses and asked local businesses, especially those that do business with us, to support the ad book with some Whittier memories, and that's going-
That's not closed yet, right?
No.
Good, just, I, good. It just reminded me, excuse me, didn't mean to interrupt you, but I-
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, we hit you up already.
I know, but I, I know, but I don't know if I had responded, and I wanted to make sure that I kept my word.
Okay. And, and also, in October, and in everybody's school committee packet tonight, you received an invitation. We're doing a fundraising dance, a dinner dance, where approximately $35 covers the meal, the tip, and the taxes on the meal, and $40 is a scholarship donation. So we've started to receive checks, especially on the ad book. So I need permission of the school committee to establish the scholarship account so that we can start depositing those checks and be able to process those things.
Mr. Chairman, I move the establishment of 40th anniversary scholarship fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? What kind of, it'll be a checking account?
It'll be a scholarship account. The scholarship committee will determine eligibility and criteria, depending on the amount that we receive, and it will be an annual award.
So it'll be an ongoing thing?
Yes.
It'll be, won't be in the main budget, or will it be in the main budget?
No, no, we have separate accounts for student activities and scholarships.
All right, and it's all legal, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anybody opposed? Unanimous, thank you.
And the last thing-
I just have one, one question about the scholarship. Is there going to be a need in the future to consolidate some of our scholarship funds? It seems like we must have at least 20 or 30 of them.
We do, but they all have specific criteria. People establish them, especially in someone's memory. They give very specific criteria, so we really wouldn't have the flexibility to be able to say, "Combine scholarships."
Can we get a list of those?
Well, I'm looking for a little, a little efficiency, that's all.
I wonder if we could get a list of them and take a look at the, is that something that we would do?
Yes, of course.
Get a list of them and take a look at the balances?
Every month, we're starting a new scholarship fund, it seems.
Because I've been very aggressive about fundraising, we've never done that before. But right now, approximately 70% of our students are going on to two and four-year schools, so that's why I've pushed as hard as I have for scholarship money.
I'm in favor of the idea. I'm just looking to make it more efficient. It seems like having-
You just want an update.
So many, so many accounts.
Well, that's a valid question, because I know from where I come from on the municipal side, good meaning and good intention, people establish funds all the time, and sometimes they go by the wayside, and people forget about them. New administrations come in, and the money sits there, and then eventually goes, goes to the state or someplace. Charlie, you have a question, or do you guys have a question?
Well, on this dinner dance-
Can we go back there?
Back to what?
Go ahead.
Two different things. Some schools, what they do, if it drops below a certain amount, they throw it into a common pool. But they still keep entitlement from-
Right.
-for the families. So at some point, you might want to look, the administration might want to look into the fact that, you know, if they're ongoing, within five years, you keep the named scholarships. It's still named, but residue of the money might go into a common pool.
You could maybe do that, once we get a list, maybe look at that and make a motion on that or something. We could look at it.
And the scholarship committee still has the disbursement power.
Right.
All right, thank you. That's what I had. Chuck, go ahead.
Thank you. On this, you can bring a guest?
Yes.
So under the choice, you have two check marks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just checking.
Yeah, you're welcome to bring a guest.
Bring your friend. No, no.
Well, Charlie, that was a good, good diversion there for bring a guest to the-
I have one more thing to ask you people for, Mr. Chairman.
Long as it's not money.
Well, it kinda is. I'd like to establish a, a club referred to as the Electronics Robotics Club. We've never had a club of our own before. We have, we have participated in Haverhill's Electronics Robotics Club. We have new faculty members, as I'm sure, you might not remember, but a year ago, we had some retirements. We have new faculty members on board. There is enough money in the payroll account, so I don't need to ask you for money, but I need you for, ask you for permission to post and fund the position of advisor for the robotics club.
So moved.
How much is that?
Eight fifty.
Eight and fifty dollars?
I have a motion and a second, so hopefully there's a discussion. Will this be aligned in the new budget?
Well, be in the class advisor group.
Be in the class advisor?
It will be with all the other advisors.
And will we take money out of the general fund to fund that every year, or how we do that?
It's, all our advisors are funded in the budget.
Budgeted in the budget, and we can do that, we can fund that, and that's, we can create as many as we want, as long as we can fund them.
Yes.
All right, just trying to be responsible and ask the right questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm all done.
Good. All right, what do we got next? We got Ms., Ms. Lynch. She's on her way up already. Nice to see you. Did you have a good summer?
I have, have you?
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
Good evening. I hope that you've all had a wonderful summer. Before you tonight, it's a new school improvement plan. What we've done is match up the goals of the new teacher evaluation to align with our school improvement plan. So I'm going to give a brief overview, and if you have any questions, obviously, stop me, and hopefully I'll be able to answer them for you. As you can see, goal one is on curriculum planning and assessment, and on this goal, we concentrated on the new Common Core curriculum, school-wide literacy, MCAS scores in English, Math, and Science, preparing kids to be college-ready, and developing district-determined measures. I know you've heard the superintendent say that a few times today. Goal number two is teaching all students by promoting learning and growth of all students through instructional practices that establish high expectations, create a safe and effective classroom environment, and demonstrate cultural proficiency. But this goal, the new teacher evaluation process, was a concentration, the new ELL requirements, English Language Learner requirements. Obviously, school safety will always be a goal that we'll continue to work on and update. Our vocational opportunities, looking at our vocational programs and improvements in that curriculum, and continuing with bullying and harassment, and making sure that this is a safe school for students physically and emotionally. Goal number three is the family and community engagement goal. By promoting the learning growth of all students through effective partnerships with families, caregivers, community members, and organizations. On this goal, it's important for the outreach to families, faculty and staff, the outreach to families of our students, the continuing recruitment of students in the 7th and 8th grades at our middle schools, promoting the achievements of faculty and students, extracurricular activities. I was very excited to hear about the Electronics Robotics Club being set up for this year, and then obviously, our many district community projects that we're continuing to go through the communities. Goal number four, professional culture. By promoting the learning growth of all students through ethical, culturally proficient, skilled, and collaborative practice, again, looking to develop district-determined measures to make sure that we're, our students are learning at the rate that there should be learning. All of our faculty now complete a self-assessment of their practice, their education practice, and they develop professional learning goals, along with a student learning goal each year. And we really encourage our faculty to work together in teams, and I think that's what I've seen as the highlight this year of the new teacher evaluation process. And then the ongoing professional development for many new DSEs initiatives will be ongoing. The new ELL initiatives, as well as the new teacher evaluation process, I could go on and on, but that's a brief summary of the, of the school improvement plan for this school year. Can I answer any questions?
Mr. Tucker.
Yeah, I just have one question, a comment on goal two for security. I wondered, how are the school bus rides going in this, this past school year so far? Or in the, in the, let's say, in the past year? I know several years ago, we installed security cameras in the buses, and, you know, there was some trouble in some buses, and that was a few years ago. In the past school year, have the incidents gone down? Has the security had a positive impact?
I would say so. You know, the students know that there are cameras on those, on those buses, and if we have had an issue or concern, we have been able to pull up the video on those cameras and deal with the situations as they arise. So it's been a very positive. It makes, it makes the bus a much safer place, in my opinion, the, the cameras on the buses.
And not as much acting out or acting out?
I don't believe so.
All right, thank you. I'm glad there's a positive impact.
Just a quick question on, on 2-1, on the goals. Evaluation process is going into effect this year. Who do we have for evaluating? Down through the academic vocational coordinators, or?
We evaluated last year. So last year was the first year of the new teacher evaluation process. This year, last year, we only evaluated half of the faculty. This year, we'll have to evaluate 100% of the faculty, and it was administrators that did the evaluations.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Principals and vocational and academic, not cluster chairs?
Not cluster chairs.
Cluster chairs, by collective bargaining agreement, unable to-
I'm just trying to clarify how many, I'm looking, that's a lot of work.
A lot of work.
Yeah, that's, I'm making that point.
Yes, sir. Continue to, I'm sorry, excuse me, to continue to reinforce sense of safety and well-being among all students through hazing, harassment, et cetera. How are you with the bullying? How do you track the bullying?
Well, we do have-
Which is basically part of that.
Right, we do have a policy on bullying, and we do have forms that need to get filled out if a student is going through a bullying or harassment issue. We've had what I feel is a very proactive approach. We really work with students, and I hope that we're developing a culture where it's just not tolerated, and that the kids will let us know too if something's going on. So our bullying, you know, statistics are not high. I would say they're very low, but it's-
But you do have, you do have-
Yes, but it's an ongoing initiative. You know, it's something that I feel very strongly about, that our students need to feel safe here physically and emotionally, and-
Do you have a handle on it?
I, I hope so, you know, and we're really trying, so.
Thank you.
And those, all of our students will receive a bullying and harassment.
The reason why I asked that, it was funny, about two weeks ago, talking to a grandparent of an incoming freshman, and they were concerned about it because the boy had been harassed two or three times at school, and really, nothing was done. But I did tell them if, and I told the grandparents, I told the parents, if they do have any problems, just get out and talk to the principal, superintendent, because they're not going to put up with it.
No. No. We've done a lot of training with, with faculty. We've done a lot of training with kids. So, you know, I'm hoping, the training needs to be continuous, it can't stop.
Oh, it can't stop.
It needs to be a continuous thing, and the students will hear about bullying and harassment from, from the administration the first day of school, so.
Thank you, because that is a big issue, no matter where you go today. Thank you very much.
Just to hitchcock on that, I assume you have assemblies with the students?
Yes.
So that includes cyber when they go home?
Oh, yes.
And after-school, and anything related associated with Whittier.
Right. Anytime a bullying or harassment issue comes into the school, we have to handle it, even if it happened after-school hours.
They're aware of the fact that, that there's punishment involved in that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Lynch, who's responsible if something happens on a bus? I don't know. Say, two students start fighting. What would be, can you give me an example, what would the procedure be?
Well, the procedure would hopefully be that the bus driver saw the incident and would let us know, and the assistant principals. We have administrators, the two assistant principals are outside at the buses every morning, and all of us are outside every day while the kids are loading the buses. So there's an immediate response, and the kids know that we're right there when they get off the bus, and we're right there when they get on the buses, so. And then, you know, either myself or the assistant principals would handle, would handle the situation, would probably look at bus video if something happened on the bus, and would, would take it from there, obviously involve the parents in the process.
Is the driver responsible to pull the bus over and go back and break up a fight?
That's a difficult one, if there's a-
You know what? The reason I asked that, and I saw a video on TV where, in another particular state, the bus driver allowed the students to continue fighting because he wasn't empowered to stop it.
One of the things, Mr. Chairman, would be where the bus is, whether or not it could stop safely. Also, in order to restrain students, if you will, the, the people have to be trained, like we do restraint training with all of our staff, and update that restraint training. We've been fortunate, we've not had incidents on a bus we've even had to deal with, with fighting. When there have been, you know, words, bus drivers have been very proactive in terms of squelching that, radioing the school, and letting them know there was tension between so-and-so and so-and-so, so.
So they could actually, there's a radio on the bus, they could actually call the school.
Yes, yes.
Somebody would monitor that transmission and take the appropriate action, whether it would be calling the police in the jurisdiction the bus was in. For instance, if it was in Hamilton, or Winham, or Ipswich, or Rowley. They could do that and call the Rowley police or something?
Right, and our bus drivers, our cafeteria people, everyone has been involved in bullying and harassment training, so they know not, it's not something that, to look the other way. It's something we want to know right about, right away, so that we can handle the situation, so.
I just was, you know, I just think it's good on our part to at least talk about these things and be aware that these things that we probably don't anticipate could happen, possibly could happen.
Absolutely.
And we have to anticipate these things. I'll tell you, in the business I'm in, if, if you give it an opportunity to happen, it'll happen. And that's just how it seems to be with people today, and we just have to be aware of these things. That was my two cents. Charlie?
So if, if there is an incident on the bus, could the result in expulsion from the bus?
It could, it depends. Expulsions carried under cer, there are certain rules and laws regarding expulsion, so weapons, drugs, something like that. So it's hard for me to-
Is that, is that individual responsible for their own transportation?[1712.32]
That's a difficult, that's difficult to answer, because that's a two-pronged approach. If they are a student who are on an ed plan or a 504 plan, you can't deny them access to programming.
Right.
So if you were to remove them from the bus, you still would have to pay for their transportation, whether it would be reimbursing their parents, or sending a school van, you still would have to be responsible for their transportation. If it was a general education student, you could prohibit their use of transportation, yes, depending on what the incident is.
Then it would be their own responsibility to get to school.
We've been, and I have to say that we've been very fortunate.
Well, yeah.
We really haven't, you know, one of the techniques that we employ is when there has been an incident on a bus, for example, if they're leaving in the afternoon, the bus driver comes back. And when the bus driver comes back with a bunch, a bus full of students, and deals with the administration for what occurred on the bus, you'd be surprised how that's a deterrent to misbehaving on a bus, because now, instead of going home, they're driving back to Whittier, they're in the front parking lot, they're dealing with the principal and the two assistant principals. We take them all off the bus, we bring them all into the building, so they don't get home till quite late. So that's really a good deterrent for keeping bus rides quiet and safe.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's next? That's it, Ms. Lynch?
Miss, for information, we need to accept this.
Yes, we need to.
It's totally, it's the pleasure of the committee.
Well, what do you want to do? Do you want to accept?
I would move the acceptance of the school improvement plan for 2013, 2014.
I have a second, and I have a motion and a second on the school improvement plan. We've had some discussion, but is there any more discussion on this?
It's good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kara.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here in my first school committee meeting in my official capacity as business manager. I have two bid results to share with you. The first was a bid on six 10-inch cutting blades. The bid opening was held on Tuesday, June 25th, at which time the bids were opened and read aloud. Present were Jared Stanton and Tamara Dentremont, both of the Whittier Tech Business Office. There were two bidders, Grizzly Industrial and Beben Machine Tool, and the low bidder was Grizzly Industrial, Inc., and they have been awarded the contract. Funding for the contract comes from the school budget line in the 2420 function area. Attached, you should see a list of the vendors who received copies of the specifications, and the invitation to bid for this item was advertised in the Lawrence Eagle Tribune on Wednesday, June 10th. There was also a bid for a one-type-C school bus. The bid opening, number 385, was held on Thursday, July 11th, at which time the bids were opened and read aloud, and present were Jeff Collette, the comptroller, and Dawn Martin, who is the supervisor of transportation. There were bids from three vendors, O'Connor Bus Sales, New England Transit Sales, and DATCO. O'Connor Bus Sales and New England Transit Sales submitted bids that were non-responsive, and therefore they failed to meet the specification of the bids. The award was given to DATCO, and they were also, I believe, the low bidder. No, they were not the low bidder, I'm sorry, but they were awarded the contract, they met the full specifications. Funding for this purchase will come from the school budget in the 4130 transportation function code. You have attached a list of the vendors who did receive copies of the specifications, and the invitation to bid was advertised in the Lawrence Eagle Tribune and the Goods and Services Bulletin on Wednesday, June 26th. Are there any questions?
What does non-responsive mean? They didn't respond to the bid, is that what you mean?
It means that there were certain specifications in the bid proposal, and they didn't meet the basic specifications.
Who we bought our other buses from?
I'm sorry?
Our other buses that we've just purchased.
I don't know the answer to that.
Did we lease those?
Oh, that's right, too. This is the first, that's right, we've been leasing them. Who did we lease those to? Weren't they through DATCO?
They were DAT, we leased, leased, yes, through DATCO.
Okay, because I thought, I knew the name was they at DATCO, so I was just wondering. Okay, great. Mr. Chairman, I have one quick question. The price that we got, $39,820, is that within our budget that we had hoped for? Was it higher, lower, on the 10 cutting blades?
I'm not sure, I wasn't present for this piece. It was in the ballpark of the budget.
So was it under it?
I would say slightly above.
Okay, thank you. What kind of cutting blades are these? What do they do? Does anybody know?
They just go down to the metal shop.
Okay, alright.
A blade is a blade.
Oh, is that what, yeah, okay.
It's for the blade, cutting blades.
Lot of money for blades, I guess.
Well, there were several of them. There were six of them.
Oh, okay, got it.
Sorry, there's six, 10, here.
Six.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, the last part, I'd like to do under the business manager's report, and it was in your handout tonight, there's a request for a transfer. As you know, we did transfers in June, not our current business manager, that was done with our interim business manager, which we're very thankful we had. These last few transfers need to take place to zero out accounts and balance the August, the 2013 budget. So there's a motion in front of you for a transfer.
Move the recommendations, Superintendent.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second to move the recommendations. Any discussion on these things? Charlie?
Yeah, you mentioned earlier that we receive $4,000 from.
We will, as a rebate.
Is that going to enter this electrical cert? Where's that money going?
This is for 2013. What we'll be obtaining will credit 2014, the upcoming budget, 14.
Even though we've already signed that budget?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I believe the credit will be through our billing.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
What does that funding be used for, and what kind of balance does it have?
Right now, this will fund it, and it will be used for purchases in the vocational technical area, for equipment that we actually removed from equipment requests last spring during the budget cycle, to bring the budget figure down. We went through that list, prioritized what needed to be purchased, and that's what will be purchased, and it will be zero, at the end, it will be zeroed out.
So it's going to give you the ability to buy equipment you need?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
A quick question. E and D account at this point?
We, the auditors are currently working on an audit now. Remember, we transferred out 210?
Yeah.
And I don't remember the exact amount, in June. Then when accounts are settled, and whatever excesses there will be transferred to E and D, it usually gets certified in the late fall, early winter.
That was my point, because we had 789 in June.
Right, and 210, it's actually 210 last, starting July.
Right, okay. Alright, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Let's move on. August annual agenda items, school committee review of school improvement plan.
We did.
We did do that, so. September annual agenda items, review and update of strategic plan in the MCAS Mass Joint Conference.
The conference, Mr. Chairman, is in November, whoa, November, I'm sorry, 6 through 9. We need to know what committee members are interested in going, and I believe that you need to select a delegate.
We do.
I nominate Dave Irving as a delegate.
Oh, if I get that.
Okay.
Well, Dave, you just raised your hand, you get nominated, seconded, and there you're going to go, it looks like.
Looks like it.
All in favor? What's that?
You have to vote.
Oh, it's okay, Charlie, I think we're going to get that. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or sending Dave?
Same.
There you go. Pass unanimously, thank you. Well, unanimously, what's that?
You should have an alternate.
Usually you have an alternate.
Alright, pick an alternate. Who's going to be the alternate?
Who else is going to go?
Huh?
Who else is going to go?
Joanne goes, doesn't she?
Dr. Testaverde usually goes.
Can we send her an app when she's not here?
Yeah, that's the best time.
Nominate Joan as a, Joanne as a alternate delegate.
She'll like that.
Tentative.
That's what she gets for missing a meeting.
That's the army way.
That's a good way. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd just like to cut through this, you know, you miss a meeting, you know.
We can change it.
And, Mr. Chairman, are there committee members who would like to go, so that we can make the reservations?
Yeah, I'll go.
Do you think you'd like to go to one of these things?
You know what? I think I would love to go.
I think you should go, it's good. It really opens your eyes.
Well, yes, I attended in a different fashion last year, so I understand that it's wonderful. However, I would give you a tentative, only because my seventh grandchild is to be born then.
Sometime.
Sometime that week, and I.
Seven's a lucky number, huh?
And I would not guess for anything.
Yeah, you get your parents.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Alright. Okay. Who else wants to go?
Too young for great kids.
David?
When do you need this bike?
We could make the reservations now, and as long as we cancel fairly quickly, we'll get out, we'll get the deposit back. The important thing is to hold the, you know, hold the room right now, because the hotel does fill up.
Yeah.
Well?
I might be in Rhode Island. I'll let you know tomorrow.
There you go, Charlie. Jane?
I just add that if I do, if I can go, I mean, I think I'm okay to drive back and forth. Maybe in the same place it was last year?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Yeah, it's not that big of a.
Okay. Lisa, you want to go?
As long as it's not, we don't have that horrendous weather that we had last year.
Yeah, but you'll miss the dinner on bill.
Oh, there's a dinner on bill? Oh, I might go.
I think it's out of the school committee.
Oh, well, that's a different story. Oh, God, here we go. So if you do go, you'll drive, and it's tentative with you, that's fine, Jane.
Yes.
That's great. Everybody set? Can we move on from this?
It wasn't, it's really not bad when it's not, when it's off-season.
So we have a couple of, we have a couple of permanent things, and then some fluid commitments, is that correct? David?
I don't know if I do yet. I'd like to, I've never been, so I'd like to.
You don't have to go to every one, right? You can go Thursday, Friday, and so on. What is it? Thursday, Friday?
Wednesday, Saturday morning.
Yeah.
I need to look at my schedule, though.
Okay.
So can you get back to Lisa and keep her posted?
Yeah, I'll get her.
Reasonable, okay?
Mr. Chairman, on this subject, could we, on the yearly review of items to come up, could we change this to this MAS, requested June rather than July or August? In other words, in the yearly, you know, we have monthly.
Don't wait until August.
Right, well, for instance, I'd like to save the district some money, and if we had put in by July 15th, we could have saved some money, I think. So we need to be a little bit proactive. A lot of times, we don't have a July meeting, so it's too late to send in our conference delegates' names or registrations, and I think there's a, isn't, Lisa? I think, I think there's a definite.
Get in by July?
Yeah, if you get in by July 15th, it's a lot cheaper, but that's my point. So if we could deal with this in June, it might be helpful, particularly since the last few years we've been taking July off.
Well, Lisa, we'll make a note of that, and next year, we'll bring it up and put it on the June agenda. So right now, it is what it is, and we've got some firm commitments and some fluid commitments, and you'll get back to Lisa. That's okay with everybody?
Yep.
Wait till Joanne finds out. Alright. Alright, we're going to move on now to subcommittee reports, executive. Last meeting was.
Has not met, Mr. Chairman.
Never met, no. We have notes from, oh, that was something else.
Yeah.
Joanne's not here for instructional.
If I can mention, Mr. Chairman, we do need an instructional, and we'll be in touch with Dr. Testaverde, because she chairs that committee, but we're looking at perhaps the last Wednesday of September, which is September 25th, the possibility of having a meeting that night.
Great.
How about the week before? I'll check. I'll talk to you later.
How about plan operations? Brett's not here, did you have a?
I'm sorry, yeah, Brett, and we have, we did not have a meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Alright.
We'll probably meet next month, so the plan ops can have a tour and see what was done on summer projects and things like that.
Okay. Charlie?
We don't need a meeting, do we?
Alright. David?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Paul?
At this time, I'd like to submit my de-inclination to be on the salary negotiation subcommittee.
That's a new word, isn't it? De-inclination? I had to think about that. Do you have any wordsmiths?
Well, you don't resign, because I'm appointed by you, so if I was to express to you my desire to not serve on that particular committee at this time, you have the power to do that.
Okay, I would accept that you, I'll accept that, and we'll find someone else.
And I, may I recommend Jane Moran as a substitute for me?
Well, that's, I'll take that as a advisement.
Thank you.
Moving on. David?
Yeah, we did meet in June 12th, and the minutes, I think, are in your packet, so. Really, we had, basically, we had one vote, and that was just to create a chair, but we had a discussion on a policy manual update, and everything is pretty much in shape, but I'm not sure, Bill, we need anything else.
Not at this time.
Right. We did, we did discuss, and Janet goes into what you were talking about. Have you had the training for school committee folks?
No.
Because that's Saturday morning at the Cape, so if you were to go or able to go, you might want to go and register for that Saturday morning, and I'm not sure if it's also Friday. Lisa, maybe you can be aware of the, once the conference starts to come out.
Isn't it required by law now?
It is required, but I mean, we've been, so we're thinking about maybe putting something in the policy manual about that, but I just, we were discussing it.
No, yeah.
Yeah, it would be helpful. Other than that, they have it at various vocational schools across the state, sometimes not so handy, so this is a chance to kill bird, two birds with one stone, so to speak. I think it's usually Saturday morning they have a.
Usually what they do is too, is they earmark a series of workshops during the three days.
Right, that you can take.
To fulfill that requirement as well.
Right, right. So I mean, I think it would be well worth it. I don't know if anybody else, David, you've done that, right?
I did it when they had a.
Yeah.
It was, it was good, it was very informative.
They do parliamentary procedure, and they do open meeting hours and stuff like that, getting along with each other, warm and fuzzy stuff.
Speaking of that, we have to redo the ethics thing again this year. When does that come out?
Yes, in the, in the fall.
In the fall? So we haven't missed it?
No, usually we ask around September.
Another thing, too, I was going through my files, and we got this diss from the MAS C.
Mm-hmm.
Do we pay for that? Is that why we got it?
Yeah, we, Whittier pays for all the committee's membership in MAS C.
So we'll get another one this year?
Yes.
Okay.
The policy and stuff are on there, too. I'll send that out, which is good.
That's what I mean, when you said both.
Anyway, I move to accept the minutes from June 12th.
Second.
Any further discussion on those minutes? All in favor? Thank you. School building wastewater, wasn't there a meeting tonight?
There was a meeting tonight, Mr. Chairman. Wastewater, the last phase of the project is beginning. The preliminary drawings have gone for approval to the engineer. The tanks will be ordered, they're ready to begin actual construction, which is, Harry helped us out tonight explaining what they've done in some of the preliminary steps. So we, we are planning on having substantial completion by December and then in the spring, they would just have to come back and do like planting, you know, like loom, grass planting kinds of things. But the, we would be substantially completed in December prior to the deadline that was permitted by Department of Environmental Protection.
It'll be up and running?
Yes, it will always be running, even through the renovation, it will always be running.
Charlie?
Are there any phases in this project where the EPA comes in or DQE and makes sure we're on the right path?
Harry, will they visit, do you know?
The EPA will be monitoring as the project goes on.
They will, okay, so we're not going to wake up at the end and say you did it backwards, though?
All right.
They approve the specifications too.
Right, but I mean, sometimes there's check, you know, benchmarks, they say, okay, let me see.
Okay, we're coming down to the end of the meeting, but I want to warn you before you leave tonight, well, we'll have an executive session. I didn't do that to begin with, but it should be brief and we'll get right through it. So we talked about the wastewater, we have no minutes to, nothing on that. So the meeting dates, the next regular school committee meeting will be here September 11th at 7:00. And there will be some preliminary meetings before that, won't there, wastewater?
There probably will be wastewater before that, yes.
Right, so just be prepared and look in the mail. Any new business to come before the school committee, Charlie?
Yeah, I, it's not imperative, but as I go through the packet, there's a lot of these positions that we hired people for a DM and some are covered by grants and some aren't. Can we get like a total, what dollars are funded by grants and which aren't? Because those should be in the budget, right?
Well, your grants technically aren't, they're part of your budget, but they're not in your budget.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Right.
They do have the budget.
The other ones have to be funded through the budget.
Right, and it's always says on the bottom of the hires where it came or comes from.
There's a way we can get like, just a quick snapshot of the totals.
Grant totals?
Just for these funding things. I don't know if it's 10% or 20%. Is it, it always confuses me when it says up to 20 hours.
Right.
Well, does that mean to me?
In other words, if they finished the work ahead of time and they didn't put in all 20 hours, then we don't bill against that grant, we would amend that grant at the end of the year and do something different with the money.
Okay, yeah.
That's why we do the up to, just in, just in case it's done early.
Is there any other, also, any other new business to come before this?
Here, one quick thing.
Oh, another one, Charlie.
It's going to go back, backwards, but. This caught my eye, we hired two people to wash the buses?
Yes.
Were those students?
No, they have to be bus drivers because they have to have bus drivers licenses.
To wash the buses?
Yes, because they move the buses out of the slot or whatever you call it. Move it to wash it and then move it back again, so they have to have the bus driver's license.
And then this one here where this woman was hired to update the student health immunization records.
Correct.
Is that because of the freshman class coming in?
Yes, we do that annually. We get health records, we request health records and usually school districts are good about getting them to us so we know if a student is due for immunization or if a student is due for a physical prior to arrival.
That's commendable, yeah.
Yeah, it helps in the fall.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, thank you.
Charlie, is there any other new business to come before the committee?
I'll think of something, next meeting.
There ain't none.
I have a question for the secretary. Did we vote to accept the minutes of May 8th, school building committee? No. You don't have to? Okay, thank you.
All right, I'd like to get the motion going for the executive session, talking about pending litigation. I need a motion. We'll do a roll call vote for this. To enter into executive session under chapter 38, section 21, subsection 3, concerning pending litigation and upon completion of executive session, we will adjourn. So I need a motion, please.
So moved.
I have a motion and.
Second.
I have a second, now I need a roll call. Yes, Dave?
Yes. No.
I always get a note.
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
No.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.